Thank you, sir. How's it feel?
Hey you, how are you? How are you? You're coming with some fun, huh?
The loss of our wonderful city attorney. He's also got an email you've flown after. For... Oh, yes. We have.
You have done one, you know, with Robert.
This time it's not. I don't think that. It's too much. It's Hawaiian.
Um, part of the problem is my head.
Why do you check out? Just go to the. It's not on there.
Huh?
She told me. Do you have a chance to look at that? So we can.
Hey, Rob.
That's bad.
Um, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The pulling of the. The justification.
All right, so, um.
That is paid for.
You went on the last side. I guess.
I didn't have that. Except. Well, what do you got?
Well.
I don't. But it does seem.
They're just calling you.
Twenty-eight percent of them.
You used to get that pretty much every year. A little bit less than they think, but. Didn't say anything.
Did you guys look at that? I would air everywhere. Yeah.
These are all on the pay. Okay. I said it might be two or three times. Yes. But I've got that much. I've got a little.
Breaking down.
The commission.
And I think that.
Coffee. Just after. Kirk said, I put the commission. You were questioned.
I think that's a call.
So. And I expect to be a better. Because they think you're. You're all right. You're gonna live.
I would not know.
But can. He's, I tell him, I've got him looking for. Did they make it? Okay, this time. Because I'm sure they said. So much more than that. So I've got him looking for that. So I've got that much. But I, you know, I think you're right. It is. I've made a million dollars. I hope to give a tax and order to. I don't like it. I don't know. Those. We don't. But. The council will be limited to infer that. Because it was said earlier. Number one, we decided to go ahead. So if you receive it, we request the county pay for it. And ninety percent of the users. By town outside of the city, but in the county. But I think we. I think we would say that maybe. Has there been a reason or orders? To back it up?
And that's.
Yeah. I'll do it in a minute. I'll kick. I'll cancel. But one of them. Control. Yeah. Probably two thousand. I don't want to say yes. Back in the.
I consider the. When you think of. Some type of. Just. But that's basically. Say. Several meetings. Over.
I think that's.
Number one, are there people?
The county council, the city council.
And then they defeated. We. And then with their. You know, the concern which is. Been very good. Yeah, and that's. So there it is. Yeah. Yeah. Kind of get here. Americans. Yeah. Yeah, doesn't make it all right. But yeah. So actually, I'll keep looking for that. Better. That's. Whether there's. Tom. Just. But we have to do. If you're ready to not get more. Over them. I think it'd be better. Then you got one. Maybe. Right there. I told you, yes, we really don't. Because you're. Your approval. Right up there. So she did. Because I told you. I'm not. Yeah, he was. Nobody has to go. Yeah. And then it's like, wait. Yeah, exactly. Okay. Thanks, Al. Picture Alan three.
What?
They hold the. That's just a. Oh, awesome. I love that. I hear. Want to see it? Nowhere. Doug in the. Solid.
How are you?
Somebody.
I was good. Yeah.
You guys walk there.
I love it.
About forty degrees. I don't. We don't. I don't even know who to tell you. Have one. Guy. It's like Phoenix fire, somebody would have one. And then everyone's like. We have. We have. Placing arms. Yeah, it's cool. Yeah, I don't have any. It's really. The system. It goes through space. And it's. Huge. When you're.
Well, there's some advantages. They're being.
We got. We need this. Right. Yeah. Right. And then. Your. Uh. So. Now, they're never. I drew. Nobody got. Plans. There's. Yeah, I hear. You almost. I think I'm about everybody. How good. Did. You. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
I was gonna check them out. That's. What is wrong? You know that.
Um, well, that's. Yeah, so.
Well, there's. Others. Yeah. Or just.
Three tires.
Can you tell us something? I have a swing light in the day. Appreciate it. Full lights? I hope the church knows. I bought my own light when I got into it. Started tearing apart. Better. Of course, you're.
Don't ask me the last time I rotated my tires.
There's a nice. There's a nice lady that was there at the desk. Said, well, they can't. They know I can. I was like, oh, that. He said nicely.
Wasn't she?
Yeah. Pleasure. But could you have comments? I haven't doing. Yeah. I don't know how. I should. I'm glad. I'm. Actually, yeah. We should come. Come right here. For this. It's usually on the. Put in. Yeah. Thirty percent. Decided. Which I think. I think.
Look at this, huh? Yeah. You got a country time. Maybe.
Okay.
You're a nice little scout. I don't like these.
Mitch on the TV. Mitch, you here?
Oh, I'm a rich order. Oh.
Uh, says. We need a.
Oh, really? I missed on there. Oh, wow.
I was. Right there. Whatever. Yeah, is that an iron? I'll give you the minutes there. Yeah. Actually, I have. Very. Very. Backside.
It's muted on Mitch's screen. Is that on our end or there?
Sure. On this one, but it's.
So he can hear us?
Can you hear us, Mitch?
Can you hear us, Mitch? Can you hear us?
No.
He knows we're talking, but I don't think he can hear us. Can't hear you.
I can't hear you either.
So he can't hear us and he can't hear you now.
Okay.
No. Can you hear us now, Mitch?
Yeah. I'm gonna have them on here.
Can you hear us, Mitch?
Okay.
Well, I don't know anything about the system. They're not.
Yeah.
Who's calling?
Did we try? Did we try?
Can you hear us? Can hear you. Can you hear us? Okay.
Nice.
We're ready to rock and roll.
Very nice.
All right, let's go ahead and open up tonight's meeting. The tight meeting. It's gonna be a regular one tonight. Oh, been so busy, I forgot to ask for a volunteer for the prayer. Wow, who will volunteer? Dan says no. Alan. Alan says yes. Alan will say the prayer and I will lead us in pledge.
We're thankful for this day. Thank you for the opportunity we have. To attend this city council meeting. Father, we thank thee for those that dedicate their time and their services to. To run the city and to oversee. The issues as they come up. Father, we thank thee for the many blessings that we have. For the opportunity we had to live in this area. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I, Father, would like to say this is my. United States of America. Andrew Hollywood. Richard Stans. One nation, God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Enroll call. All members of council are present in the camera four, except for Mr. Hart. Joining us via. Television monitor there. We have our city engineer, a city clerk. And I would like to take a moment to. Recognize the passing of our city attorney, Greg Henney, on March seventeenth of this year. He was a friend and a trusted colleague. He did a lot of years of service for the county, for the city and for his church. And it is a reminder to us all that life is finite and short. It happened to any of, one of us at any time. So if you get that urge to text your kids or to call somebody and say something to them, do it. Because we don't know. Tomorrow is not promised to any of us. All right, with that being said, let's move into. Minutes for the council, please review the minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes dated March. What was it?
Twenty. Twenty. Your motion, second, to approve the minutes dated March twentieth of twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes before I call for the vote?
I think they were very well done.
Yeah.
Yes. Good job.
All in favor, accepting the minutes?
Aye. Aye.
Council.
He said aye.
Council, please review. Account payables. Dated March nineteenth through the thirty-first of March, twenty twenty-four. Also, please review payroll for the March first through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Okay? The chief's here.
Mitch, they were covering shifts for spring break and stuff. And then we also had somatary training. And we've been running two grants this month. For that month.
Did you get all that, Mitch? Any other questions or comments?
Uh. I guess I have a question on. An item I've been anticipating. On. Payables, and that is. An expenditure for marking the police cars. You have an update on that, chief?
Yeah, we're working on those. Just as January gets tired and then kind of been waiting for the dormant weather to help those stick better.
That's all I have. That's all you have? Okay?
Uh, just kind of a general question for Director Hanson. How's we getting the generator? Getting everything figured out?
On the hydro plant?
Yeah.
We had. I even had a bunch of power switch outs with the arresters. Cutouts on our supply side. Side, just. Stuff that's older than me, that probably. Didn't do with the intent of actually fixing the problem, but it couldn't hurt. So I had him do that last week. Fired up the hydro plant yesterday. Right now it's still on. Maybe it did solve. So anyway, what she did, um, the troubleshooter did say that there were some, you know, connections on some of our jumpers that weren't real tight. So I said. Could have.
Maybe just kind of eliminating variables.
I figured we'd stop or start with the cheapest.
Good plan.
Thank you. Fix it and work our way up. But as it's been around over twenty-six hours straight, which is better than the two hours it ran last time, so.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Could someone just? Question on fourteen fifty, that BPA generation and transmission. What was your? Seventy-six thousand.
That's the power we buy from Baltimore Power and the transmission is. The delivery to get it here. All over. BPA lines, Pacific cord lines, whoever in between there and here. I think we budget about two million a year.
Okay.
For power and transmission.
Thank you for that.
I don't think. Has anybody made a motion? Are you guys still running through?
Oh, I thought, yeah.
No, I just, no, I'm just making sure you guys get your questions in first. Before we go down that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the payroll and the accounts payable dated three nineteen through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Accept the payables. Dated for the month of March, and the payroll dated for the month of March, calendar year of twenty twenty-four. I'll ask one more time, because there usually is one. Are there any other questions or comments regarding payables? Or payroll before I call for the vote? Yes?
Mr. Mayor. Line item fifty-four hundred, ITech Solutions. Set up email for Paul Gritten. Ninety-four dollars. Ninety-four dollars to set up an email. Are we, um. Are we getting a shellac in here? Because, you know, the last time I set up an email through Gmail, it was a hundred percent free.
I called Randy. Because my system got hacked and he did it all over the phone and. He's pretty professional.
He had both of us that day.
Yeah, he does. You know, maybe there's somebody else that can do just as good, but he does a good job getting you back online and keeping things going.
You know, if I made a hundred bucks every time I did it, I'd be pretty professional, too.
Are you? Are you questioning your career choices right now?
I was thinking about it. I mean, I don't know.
I was always told, never mess with the tech guy.
Yeah. Well. Maybe they haven't put me in my place, but.
I got it. I got it.
Yeah, just. A bird under my saddle.
Fair enough. All right. All in favor of accepting the payables and the payroll?
Aye. Aye.
Was that an aye, Mitch? Okay, thank you. All right. Up next, citizen input. I'm gonna open the floor for citizen input. Door's now open. Spring is coming.
It was till you said something.
Well, I didn't wash my car, so spring is coming.
I'll step up and say.
Please, Debbie, please.
I'm sorry.
Fill the awkward silence with your words.
A couple of things. Um, one is about Chamber Commerce. Just want to let you know our next meeting is tomorrow at three o'clock at Ender's. You guys are all welcome to come stop by and see us. Um, also, um. Tomorrow, I'm going to announce that we have set up a workshop for everybody here in town for free. Um, the State Small Business Association is going to come and do some trainings, you know, just a couple sessions, three sessions and. Um. Cover a couple different topics and then Molly. I can never say her last name.
The SARS.
The SARS, yes. Um, she is going to do one as well. And so that will be on the fifteenth of this month as well. So just kind of, I'm gonna announce that tomorrow, but then I realize you guys won't have another meeting before then, so I'll just let you guys know now. Um, the other thing is at the last meeting, um, we discussed, um. The survey for Ender's. Um, and I just wanted to let you guys know that Joanna Ashley and I met yesterday for about two and a half hours. And kind of put together a plan for it. Um, so we'll probably meet a couple more times. Probably the next time we'll have something to come to you guys with.
Next. Next time being next council meeting?
Yeah.
Will you shoot me some of your notes?
Yeah.
And just kind of.
Keep the.
Got a few, few things and then. We'll, uh. Kind of call it a draft.
Yeah. For sure. Yeah, so we're just, I just want to let you all know that we are meeting on that and kind of trudging ahead on it.
But you also shoot me, too.
Absolutely.
Oh, you're shooting him.
Shooting him, sure. Sure, yep.
And I as well.
They'll shoot us all.
Sure. Uh, let us get our, our, uh, stuff together first.
Yeah, I was gonna share it with everybody, but yeah.
Yeah, let us kind of get our ducks in a row.
Okay.
Our plan is to kind of like do a little summary so that we're not like throwing everything out there. And then saying like, if you guys want to dig into the nuts and bolts of it, you guys can go here and dig into the nuts and bolts. Um, but here's our summary. And then here is a survey.
Okay.
That's kind of.
I've got a whole list of things, but I didn't want to inundate you guys with.
Oh, you won't.
Uh, unintentionally biased here.
Nope. Nope. We're, I think we're both real professional.
Oh, I, yeah.
I think we'll do good on that, so.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, you guys.
Debbie. I'm gonna go ahead and close the floor. Door's now closed. Next, local exhibit donation to the Soda Springs Historical Society. Who's taking the lead on that one?
Chelsea.
Oh, all right.
First, I'm here. You want to talk it? Oh, gosh.
So what are these?
So these. Are like this picture and Coach Dad can probably go on about this a little bit more in depth than I could, but the, um. Andrea got the city a grant for the Spark Museum. And she worked with the Caribou, um, or the Soda Springs Historical Society.
Caribou.
Caribou, okay. So, um, she worked with them a lot and they found all these like really cool pictures. So there's a bunch there that they kind of clipped from like magazine articles and stuff.
Some of these are the Last Chance Canal. And then the rest of them are. Pieces from a newspaper from July fourth, nineteen forty and stuff like that she got. But Robin Thomas. With her. Artsy skills. Scanned all these and collected all these. We just put her name on it.
So we displayed these at, um, Ender's when the Spark Museum was there. And while, uh, so it was kind of like a museum of the county slash Spark exhibit kind of thing. And so for the Caribou Historical Society's help in getting all of these, um. We're donating all of these pictures to them so that they can display them or. Show them off or whatever they want to do with them.
Now, Bill gave. A good story on the Last Chance Canal during that. That exhibit. So if you get a chance to talk to Bill about that Last Chance Canal, it's a good story about not giving up.
I would like to talk about this one a little bit. That guy right there, the third picture on the top row. Stan Matthews one. And. My, uh, father-in-law. Was his son and, uh. From as long as I can remember, hanging above the door in their office was this picture only. It was only about six inches high and about two feet long. It's taken in nineteen nineteen off a water tower that's right up just east of the depot. And, uh. When. Robin blew it up. All the little details that you couldn't see then, like the guy standing in front of the depot and the hotel and the cars and stuff. And even the names on the buildings downtown are readable. So this is pretty cool.
You can see this guy's wearing like a tie. And everything's not cool.
And when you look at it, you can recognize buildings and stuff that are either there or not quite there, like courthouse isn't quite there, even though. It said it was built nineteen nineteen. So we're kind of excited about having this.
Yeah.
Get in here, Jerry.
Yeah. He's like, I guess, just my arm.
That's awesome.
I might go, but no.
Okay.
I just didn't want it to fall.
These were hanging all around the outside of the actual Spark exhibit.
We were grateful for all of your guys' help, though. I wouldn't have been able to do it without.
We were, uh, we were glad to be part of it. But Robin did most of the hardest stuff. Oh, and I probably should mention the scanner she used. Belongs to the library, but it is in the museum's possession because they didn't really have enough space for it. So. Robin took the opportunity to figure out how to use it and, uh. This picture here is under glass and we didn't dare take it out, and she did that with the frame and the glass still on the picture. So.
And Bill, you guys have like a, like a place now, don't you? What's the address of the place CJ?
One hundred East Hooper. And uh we'll try to be open on Saturdays all summer and we'll get some more volunteers and members, maybe even more days.
We thank you, Bill, for, for keeping the, the fire alive.
Well, actually the opportunity to do. I was really tickled about this Last Chance, Robin put me onto that, that's why I talked about it, because the Spark thing was the, the uh theme of it was the Spark of Innovation and so they were uh, she was looking at the Last Chance and she said this ought to be all over the county, not just Soda Springs and when you read the story about the Last Chance, it's called the Last Chance because they were about to lose their water right if they didn't put water in the ditches. And one of the things they did was they plowed a canal through the snow drip and run the water through it to get it in the ditch before it was frozen, before they actually lost their water right and then they did it right after, so. And then, and they tried numerous times to get their water in, and failed every time until they were right up against the wire, so.
Well, we thank you, Bill and Jerry, for, like I say, opening up the store over there and the museum and keeping the fire going for the history of our area and, you know, history, you know, shows us where we might be going in the future if we look at it.
Well, if you look at it, you can see where you made mistakes and where you gotta.
Darn right.
Not make the same one again, so, and we appreciate this and I wondered what you were gonna do with them, but now I'm pretty tickled.
Rest assured. They're in capable hands.
I'm sorry it took so long though.
That's okay.
There's been a lot of changes in, in the office.
Yeah, thank you. We're gonna go now, so, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you CJ.
Alright, let's dive into section four, unfinished business, appointment of city clerk, treasurer, over of office. We are going to appoint Andrea Hatterley to be our new city clerk slash treasurer. I'm going to give her the over of office. Do you want to take pictures, Bill, while we're on?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Well, the good thing is sitting next to him, he'll, he'll handle it for you. Alright, I'll read it, you just confirmed that you.
I'm ready, right man?
Sure. Hi, the undersigned, you saw me swear that I support the constitution of the United States and the state of Idaho and the laws and ordinances of the city of Soda Springs and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk treasurer of the city of Soda Springs according to the best of my ability.
I do.
That's official welcome aboard.
Hold on, do it again. We have some tech if you have. Some special effects going to attach.
Congratulations Andrea.
Thank you.
Alright, project list update, Alan, now that Joy dare say Spring is here again, how are things shaping up on our project list?
Um, two or three changes we made and then a couple other items. Just trying to find them on here. The first one is Main Street upgrade. We will go out for bids next week on the whatever thirty, two Thursdays in a row. We plan a site visit and a walk-through, a pre-bid conference on the nineteenth, a visit we do on the twenty-sixth. So we've got to, we've got to have two weeks of advertising, we'll do the walk-through on Friday and then the bid we do the next Friday. So by the end of, the end of uh April, we should have a contractor pick and put a schedule together. In between there, we will have a public, an open house type, public meeting with the business owners and everybody along Main Street. We can do that while we're doing the bidding. So that's coming.
So a bid, but in the thing what you said?
The bids will be due until twenty-sixth. Then whatever time it takes to do the evaluation, probably won't be presented until the following two Wednesday night at city council for approval. Let me get it real quick, if I can get it full up. So I would look for approval on the first of May, that's our first council meeting after the bids are due, so we can get the, the bid task put together, bring it to, to the council for approval will be the first of May, then we can go from there. Another one, Justin has more information, but I guess the new snowplows will be to the next phase by the end of next week, start putting everything together. I don't know if you wanna say anything on that, I'll just kind of mark it that way.
No, that's fine. Yeah, they'll both, one unit is in Boise at Rest Track Centers and wait for the other one, then they'll take them to the up there next, the end of next week. So we'll get them by next year, about the sixth.
It's the reverse jinx.
Yeah, we know Spring will be here because we got new snowplows.
I guess the other ones to talk about, met with Russ Ropers this afternoon for a few minutes, the county is looking at, or him with the emergency coordinator, which is John Myers, for the ODS Churchill meeting together, they're gonna meet with commissioners Monday and start discussions on a proposal to change signs on county roads around the area, the green ones that are all worn out now. That could affect the city, it'll be as people want it, but as they put that plan together, we might be in a position to request signs for some roads, some houses type thing. So just so you know, that's just starting on Monday with the county commissioner, more of a county issue, but it will overflow into the city. So we might have the opportunity to upgrade some of our street signs, road signs basically is what they're looking at.
Yeah, stop by my shop and ask a couple questions and uh one of the questions that I didn't have an answer to is, is there any ordinances that dictate uh addressing in city limits?
For what, marking or for?
Yes, for, for the, the residents.
Residents are required to have house numbers on their houses, it's in our code, it's in the state. Addressing itself is handled by the county, even in the city, they, they designate addresses to each parcel. So that's a county function, but the city does require numbers on houses, so. So that's just, you know, that's coming down the road if you hear anything about it. We'll get more information as we go, go ahead. I think that's Scott's going to talk a little bit.
Yeah, I talked to him too, uh, part of what they're doing is also renumbering houses or just making sure numbers are on there and stuff. We do have one hiccup and that is our ordinance requires those numbers to be four inches and county three. So to get him on that, I don't know, we have to change that to four inches, five, four.
We'll run with three.
What was that then?
Minimum of four, four, minimum of four inches. And that's where our code, I'd say follows. So, but you know, all of that will be developed if we get into there, just so you're aware that's coming. Andrea, will you pull up the, let me see what's first? Click on the one, the two, the transformer and the transformer two.
Okay.
If you um open that on your iPads, um kind of just a stockpile of transformers we have in the yard. Justin approached me and said, why don't we have the guy that's buying the transformer out in the industrial park, look at these, so I'm putting together, Justin's on the inventory, I gotta put together some pictures and send to him, but um in short, there are we have fifty-seven total transformers.
Dinner, out there, out of service?
Out of service, put there by Rocky Mountain Power when they come out, we don't know if they're good or bad, some of them may be good. But anyway, I'm gonna send pictures of each transformer to this guy, then I'll bring it back to council for approval, but we might be able to get rid of them instead of just.
Fifty-seven of them?
There's fifty-seven of them there and so.
That's a lot.
You'd rather buy new and have, we'd have anything with them.
No, we don't, anytime we have a, a transformer fail, Rocky Mountain Power just puts in a new one for us, then they, then they take the old one down and bring it to our yard. My assumption is that every transformer we have in the yard is not good.
Exactly, that's probably a fair assumption. And, and you know, we're looking at four to five thousand dollars assuming they're all PCB free and they can just take them under the assumption they have to rebuild them, there may be some there the other way, but we will bring back a proposal to the council for approval before we commit to it, but we're, we're starting that process and, and you can see in those two pictures, just, just an overview of what's there. Go to the Maverick Tank Foundation and then after that, just Maverick Foundation. The first one on, on your iPad, the Tank Foundation.
Open up, looks a little rocky.
That's the rock, they've got about a twenty-five foot hole on the east-west side of it and they're working that way. If you go to the next picture, the, the one that shows the fuel tanks, there's three tanks up there on site, they've got to get probably thirty feet deep to set them in and cover.
And how far did you, how deep did you say the hole is now?
I, I think it's twenty-five on the west end, it's probably only fifteen on the east end and that's where they were hammered today, but it's, they've been hammered for two weeks on it.
So didn't hold on rock. Did they give you an idea how much longer they'd be doing the hammering?
No, they called and asked about dynamite and.
Oh my heavens, really?
Asked for a plan and I haven't heard back from them, they just keep hammering, so I'm assuming they're gonna handle it that way.
So their test drill hole was off?
No, that whole, that whole site, all of that foreground back in there is, within three to five feet, you're in solid lava rock, that's why it's never been developed.
And they knew what they were getting into?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it should have, yeah. And then if you look at the one that shows, I think it's Maverick Foundation, that is what's gonna be under the floor inside the building, we can see the stem walls around the perimeter, they're already poured, that's what, that's conduit and whatever else lines that are, that are put in there, they're working that way, but there's a ton, a ton of conduit under there. And then the next pictures are, where did they go?
I see that one right there, did I see it, did you see it, Ryan?
Yeah.
It's the Mountain Dew fountain.
Yeah.
Big bite.
Big bite for you.
I didn't put them on, but I had two pictures if you're interested of, of the steel, structural steel going up on Liberty Dodge, they started hanging steel I think yesterday and, and they were in the process today, so the building structure is starting to go up. I think that's it for project, if somebody has questions.
Do members of council have questions regarding the project list or any of the photographs that you have viewed for Mr. Alan Skinner?
So uh what are the plan for communication for Main Street, for the businesses and?
Well, the first thing, we'll send letters to everyone inviting them to a public meeting.
Okay.
That's, that's where we're gonna start, I don't know the answer past that, there'll be more, but we'll develop that plan based on what they want, what they need, so we'll start there. We'll do that in between, while, while God forbid, we'll, we'll get letters out, get a, a meeting scheduled. Hopefully we'll get good attendance and we can put a plan together with those affected here listening to it.
Right.
I'm sure you have.
We'll have Justin and Dan both there.
Oh yeah.
They've been involved in this whole process from the very beginning. And the chief too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have. Alright, if there isn't any other further questions regarding project list or the photographs you've viewed, let's move to city cleanup week, scope and schedule, it has Justin and Mitch's name on it, uh, Justin, you want to take the lead on that or Mitch?
I'm not standing up there, I talk too much when I go.
We'll let Mitch take the lead on that.
Alright. Are you, are you wanting to do what we did through this year?
So last year worked really, really good for us as a crew, um, just finishing within the timeframe, you know, that we're basically, that we have by the end of the week by just, you know, being able to take stuff. And I think it's important to remember that we're still providing a service to the residents of the city and others that come that aren't residents of the city. Sorry, just had to throw that in there for fun, but uh anyway, I think it's still a service, you know, we're still hauling off things, we're still taking people's refrigerators, you know, and anything pretty much.
Whether they could put it back with trucks.
And so it worked out good because like I said, it allowed us to have eyes at all times on the yard, we didn't have problems with people just throwing stuff, carpet and garbage in a metal bin, which when you get a truck full of garbage thrown in a metal bin, it is not fun going in there and fishing it out by hand, so it worked good.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that, because you've had instances in the past that you could span, what, seven truckloads on one home versus maybe one truckload or two on one?
Well, it, it got to, and we've, you know, we've talked about this before, it got to the point where people were coordinating their large tree removal with cleanup week. I think that, I think that is a little bit of the, what's the word I'm looking for? I don't know, it's, it's not a contradiction, but it's taking advantage of that situation. That's not what cleanup week is for, is to take out a hundred foot pine trees out of yards, it's, I mean, that's, it's just not, that's not why we started it, we started to get rid of people's junk, so bring it to the yard, we'll haul it away. The other towns around, that surround us do the exact same thing, they provide, they provide roll-offs in their city property, people can bring stuff down and then they manage it from there, so this is, it wouldn't be us not doing whatever.
At last meeting you mentioned the possibility that the city could be competing with like, for instance, tree removal uh businesses and so I like, I like your idea.
Well, when you asked Meyer about the, the dump truck load, so I want to say it was, cameras two summers ago or two years ago or three, yeah, there was an instance where we had literally three or four large trees and.
I remember that.
When we're, when we, we've got one week and we do it by the day of the garbage drop, right, so on Monday's garbage drop, that's, we just follow the garbage drop basically when we do the hiccup. And that one residence took us half of that one day that we had to do, basically a third of the entire town, it took us half a day to do one house. Try on by those, with a clear understanding of the public that we don't do it or, which my guess is that will upset people more than just saying we're gonna not do curb side pickup, bring your stuff to the yard, is my feeling on that.
Well, I, I'm in agreement that we proceed as we did the previous year. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council regarding this issue? Does council agree to continue with what Justin has laid out?
With any emotion?
I don't think so, just a thumbs up, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's just, it's just saying yes.
I support the proposal.
And that's all he needs to hear is that you guys got his.
Yeah.
Got, got, you know, your support.
Or make sure Robin's second, that's what we're gonna do.
So if somebody asks, you'll be able to tell them, yes.
It was Justin Hanson's idea.
Yeah, you know what, you're more than happy to, or we're more than welcome to relay that message.
My only, my only reservation was when we were doing curbside, it was a, it was a great opportunity for people when they didn't have the right equipment to, to uh really clean out their backyards, do that, I mean, and I'm telling you, the, the full trees, that's ridiculous, it is, it's wrong. But what it does is, a lot of that is, is it's really nice for, you know, then we put our money where our mouth is, right? To really have those folks to say, okay, we, we have all this stuff out, I think one year, we even did metal. It was a number of years before you came.
On curbsides?
On curbsides and I, I, I'm okay with what we're going forward with, I, I used both of them and it was, it was great, so.
I'm sorry, I'm belaboring this, Mitch is over there looking like, move on. So it used to be different, right, we used to pick up lots, everything off the curb and then people could also bring their limbs down when we did it, down at the gravel pit, we just brought it down and that turned into, I wasn't here, but I understand that was not the most ideal situation. The reason we, we stopped taking anything but bagged leaves and items and limbs was because we actually have to separate it, what we haul now, when in those days you could just throw it all together, take it down, and now you have to have hassles separate from trees and limbs, you can't have any metal, you can't, you know, have tires, in the old days they just threw it all in there and dumped it, so that, the landfill does not allow us to do that.
So it is the first week of June officially?
That was the word I got from the county and I got from the other ones.
Alright, well, we'll make sure that we put that out, out to the public so they can make preparations and I can make preparations, because I got stuff to bring in. Alright, let's move on to the uh next item on unfinished business, nutrient donation agreement, Alan?
I put the three, there's the, the agreement itself, the license agreement and the maintenance agreement, um Mitch I think sent them out too and so if you want to review them, they're in there, basically the agreement is um Nutrien Agrium, New West, we'll donate six hundred and eight acres of land to the city. Our agreement is we'll pay half of the escrow fees, we have, we have um contacted Alliance title, they will close the deal without requiring title insurance, I did look up, the title insurance was about thirty thousand dollars, but Alliance will close the deal as a donation to the city. They're also donating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop the land as a a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop the land as recreational property. They're agreeing to, under the maintenance agreement, a hundred and five thousand, which is three years at thirty-five thousand a year to continue spraying weeds and do fence repairs. They have paid for twenty-five thousand dollars for a survey that's completed. And they're they're willing to assist in design and engineering to some degree on developing the properties. I guess what we're what they're on here for tonight is to get council's thoughts and ask for approval for the mayor to sign it when we, when we're ready to close.
Water rights.
There are three water rights included. They have
Changed.
They have changed those water rights in applications for the adjudication. I talked with Water Resources. They said, once you have the property do a change of name on the water rights and then we will reapply to sustain the order. I think there's a little over four point eight CFS. So we'll start that process as soon as this is closed. Our Mitch put out a schedule. Our goal is the fifteenth of of April to close on this. And Mitch probably has a lot more information than that, but that's kind of what I gleaned out of reading it.
Mitch, I just have one question on the licensing agreement. It says on subheading two, New West and New West employees, agents and invitees may use the property for recreational purposes. This term goes either five years from effective date failure to comply with an agreement or as soon as the city opens the property up to general public. That's gonna be a while. Do we really want New anybody who works for Nutrien New West to go out there? I don't see it being a problem, but it just. Well, are we gonna open it up for?
It'll be behind closed, locked gates to begin with.
Okay.
We can, we can restrict. Now, by the key will be locked for the general public initially.
I kind of struggle with that a little bit. If the city owns the property, how come they get to go out there and none of us can?
Hold that. I don't think there's anything that stops. A lot. We can allow that whether it's city council or general public or whatever.
Gonna open it up to general public?
Eventually. Well, I guess the council decides when that would be, but yes.
Okay, well, I think if they get to.
There's a dozen that restricts.
Yeah. Well, I just, city, well, residents or I think we're gonna, you know, we can open it up, you know, if we're not gonna do any construction or work out there.
Agree.
We should allow everyone to go walk their dog.
I mean, if we're gonna, and they should have brought the mask, but if we're gonna there's eighty acres, I believe, that borders them to the north. If we're gonna open that up for an access point, it's either there, through the gravel pit, gun range, or right next to the Bayonne Creek Bridge. There may be a time where there's construction going on, one or more. We'd want to restrict it, but other than that, it ties right in Bayonne Creek Road on two of those three places. City property is right against Bayonne Creek Road.
And something to talk about when we go through some other.
I don't think their intent was to restrict
Okay.
anybody else, but they still wanted to be able to use it.
All right. Anything else regarding the nutrient donation agreement, Dan?
Yeah, I just say that all I can, again, that I've said it before, is I'd just like to appreciate note of appreciation to Councilman Hart, Director Skinner and Attorney Haney for their hard work on this because it's it was certainly a lot of work. So thank you, Mitch. And Alan.
Thank you very much. Sweetie, the motion.
I think
Mitch wanted one, didn't you?
The mayor's saying to do.
Did you want a motion? Mitch, to pre-authorize the city? No, a motion of second to authorize the mayor's signatures, subject to final review by Nutrient and us, the other party involved. And then we all come to an understanding and agreement. And that the signature will be take place at closing. I tried to paraphrase as much as I could.
You're seconding it, right?
Yeah, yeah, Ryan did. Now, is any other questions or comments regarding the motion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, let's dive into section five, new business employee pay increase, Paul.
Yes, it does. Pretty simple. I and if this is not the appropriate forum for this, let me know. But I would like to make sure that our new city clerk is compensated at the same rate that the outgoing city clerk was compensated.
Yes, and we've had that, her and I have had that conversation. Yeah, and she's like, yeah. So, yes.
Your guys' decision is not mine.
And I would also request it be retroactive to when she began.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that'll be where I'll work.
Um, A, questions or comments for Paul? Yes, that's happening.
Okay.
All right, forecasting contribution letter 2025. Which you guys have here in the Idaho Commerce Department. Is this our fiscal year that we give to that program, Andrea?
Um, yes. So this is the pre-letter for the next budget.
The annual for Molly.
Because she has to submit everything to get her, I think it's thirty thousand dollars from the state.
Mr. Manley, a motion that we give you the authority to sign for the pre-letter for, the forecast C the, for the fiscal year of 2025 for our commitment of three thousand dollars and also an in-kind donation of city hall space valued at forty-eight hundred dollars.
I'll say that.
And also Molly's doing a great job.
Oh, she's, she's I tell you what, she's phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
We're getting
We're getting our money's worth in that zone.
Absolutely.
I drive her nuts on almost a weekly basis. So, yeah. What was that Debbie?
I said, I'm glad I helped you.
No, you're
No, and she's almost there. Like, she has so many in, a lot of things.
And a lot of the grant stuff is coming from, from this program to us. So, yeah, I think it's well worth it. So we have the motion of the second to commit to the forecasting fiscal year of the three thousand dollars and the donation of in-kind space in city hall up to forty-eight hundred. Are there any questions or comments regarding that letter before I call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mitch, now the aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we'll open up the floor to citizen input. Floor is now open.
I just had a couple of comments, questions. The first one is on the Main Street revamp that is gonna include those local businesses. I think even though my business, my house isn't in that area, it's gonna affect everybody in this room. Is that something that'll be an open meeting for all?
I think initially, sure. Yeah, I mean it can be, I guess.
Okay. I just, I mean, I would have a lot of interest in being at least able to view and listen to that. So, yeah, that'd be great. And I would like to commend City Councilman Gritten for posting on Facebook the meetings and YouTube. And we watched YouTube on an airplane last week for the city council meeting. It was wonderful. The second comment it was great. We watched it. So.
That's awesome.
I am also in agreeance with Justin's city ordered cleanup not to have the curbsides. I would just as a caveat, it's quite expensive to discard junk tires. We have a lot of customers that will take them and not want to pay disposal fee. And they'll save those up until the county does the county cleanup and turn those in for free, which I am all for. I would warn you that some people just don't ever do that. And you'll have these same people that'll, I'll save this for the cleanup and it'll it'll just end up being dirtier and dirtier and just absorb more and more garbage. So I would hope that the city decides to maybe enforce some city cleanups because as of yet, you know, across the street from my business, it still looks bad. There's a couple of burned out buildings. There's some issues around town that I think need to be at least addressed. And that would be my only concern about. But I am all for the way that Justin has set it up as of now. Good job.
Anybody else?
I'll make a quick comment.
Go ahead, Debbie.
On the cleanup, like, maybe we can get a youth group or something to be available to, like, help elderly people who aren't able to get stuff done.
Yeah, that's
You know, I mean.
Nobody's stopping anybody from helping, helping their neighbors. If a group wants to get together, like the young mans or, or, you know, the boy scouts down the street here, they're more than welcome to go door to door and help people load.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Like, maybe, you know, if there's gonna be some elderly people or are able to, and, you know, maybe we can do something, or even something.
What about the Hope Recovery Center?
Well, they've been asking for a project.
That would be a really good project for them.
We can reach out to Melissa. Yeah, we'll hit them up. Because they, they are looking for a project, specifically that group is.
That would be a really good project for them.
It would too.
I just wanted to.
No, thank you, Debbie.
Can I ask a question?
You can get up and ask.
You're not happy with that.
What's your address?
On that donation of property, is that gonna increase city limits or what's the goal for that? Or will it just be natural?
Yeah, we can't really develop it for anything like that because of the wetlands portion of that. So it will be recreational property only. So think of another park and the eventual plan is to connect all the trails on that side of the city. And and our our initial plan is to have public input and have a map and maybe get a committee together and say, you know, this is the two hundred acres we can't touch. That's by all accounts, nor do we want to. But what do we want to see with this? This four hundred acres? Are we talking strictly trails? Do we want to see, you know, motocross? Do we want to see bicycle park? Do we want to see running paths? You know, whatever. So this is kind of a really cruel spot that we're in right now. We don't get given six hundred acres of land for, and money at the same time.
Training water rights.
And water rights that
But it's out of science, anyone?
Yeah, so south of the ground pits, um
Just the side of Bayonne Bridge?
Yeah, yeah, just the side of the shore of the bridge. Yeah, all the way to the bridge. So right now, the plan is to not screw it up.
That's the impact zone right now, isn't it?
Part of it.
Yeah. And we did get a grant, but we're not. So are we Still working on that. Still working on it. Because of where the road lies and their boundaries, it's a matter of feet.
It's a federal government.
Yeah, if you think we're a problem, you have a deal with the federal government. Specifically, you. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the floor to citizen input. What I have on my agenda, so that was section seven, which requires counsel.
Make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh six, one A to consider the evaluation dismissal or displan of an employee.
Second. We have a motion of second to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, one A to consider the valuation dismissal or displan of employee statement of these assets. Turn that recess, use the bathroom if you need to.
Thank you.
How do, how do we let them video?
Oh, don't even.
I mean I haven't got any fan mail, so.
It's, I think it's, it's back a little bit. It's hard to see, you can hear, but I can see real good. You know, on my phone.
Yeah. I could, and I could listen to it, but.
All right. Good to have you speaking for us.
It's good though. It's nice. It's great. Yeah. Good. What bullshit. She's not doing nothing. What are you doing, bro? Living my best life.
Oh, I just hold. I've been all day, kneel down, working on the car, so. Just holding worn out. Ryan gets this.
Every day, man.
He had those cars up high. It's much easier. I'd rather stand all day than to be kneel down working on something. Because we put it in the wrong spot. Here's where it sat. Had it in there for a while. Boy, it's like key brakes on a F-150. Super fun. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
You know.
Oh, he's gonna get serious.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we've had a lot of systems that worked good for seventy years and then some spent, I says, we can make this better.
Yeah.
Turns out, you can't.
Yeah, no, go back to manual. Because